Evening, everyone. Tonight is a special regular meeting of the South Kings Town Planning Board. The date is Thursday, March 3rd. It is 7:00 PM. The first item on our agenda is roll call. Joe Murphy.
Here.
Susan Axelrod.
Here.
Josh Daley is absent at this time. Peter Di Stefano is absent. Robin Poffier.
Here.
And Maria Mack is here and Paul Jordan is also absent at this time. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda of which there are no items on this consent agenda. That also goes for approval of minutes as there are none. Our first agenda item is major subdivision pre-application concept plan. Flynn Estate subdivision proposed flexible frontage subdivision to accommodate the existing three residential house lots and one new proposed residential house lot located at 265 341 and 309 South Road. And to remind board members, a pre-application is essentially an exchange of information and ideas and there is no public hearing per se associated with that. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
Madam Chair, I believe we received correspondence asking them to table this to your next regularly scheduled meeting this evening. Okay, I'm not sure if there is anyone in attendance representing Flynn who wanted to make that statement tonight.
I don't see any names that I recognize from that application and I also was not aware that they asked for a continuance.
I thought we did receive any.
Are you referring to Daffodil Gleed? That's a different application.
Sorry, Daffodil. Sorry, Jay.
No, yeah, this, I don't see any representatives here.
I stand corrected. It was Daffodil Gleed that asked for the extension.
I see.
You may wanted to come back to this item.
Yes, that's.
I think anyone's here.
If the board agrees, let's move on to our next agenda item and we'll come back and see if they appear. Our next agenda item is development plan review advisory to zoning JSC Management Group Burger King. Is there anyone representing the applicant?
So I'm bringing them in right now.
Todd Markovich with APD here to discuss the Burger King.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And do you have other members of your team with you this evening or is it just you?
There's also Steve LaFond. He should be on as well. He is a member of JSC.
He is, he is here. I've promoted him. His camera and his audio are currently off.
Oh, yes.
I'm here.
Mr. Markowitz, please, you have the floor. Please proceed.
Okay, great. Let me see if I can just share my screen.
How about I, you want to refer to the plan set?
Yeah, I'll just kind of, I can drive on my end here if that's fine. Can you guys all see that, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. So again, good evening. My name is Todd Markovich with APD Engineering and here tonight on behalf of our client JSC Management for the existing Burger King at 126 Old Tower Hill Road. As I know many of you have already seen this application, this store as well as others in the area are part of Burger King's remodel program, which includes both an exterior site component as well as, you know, building changes both on the inside and the exterior facade. In this case, the proposed site work generally consists of the addition of a second drive-through in the rear here. And I'll just flash back to the existing plan. Basically has an existing single drive-through. Customers come from the rear, access that lane and can leave the site. What we're looking to do again is to add a second drive-through in this existing pavement area. So if I flash the screen, you'll see that we now have this internal drive.
Todd, could you, could you, as you're doing your display, blow that up or enlarge that?
Oh, that a little better?
That will help your discussion much better.
Okay, sorry about that. So again, I'll just flashback to the existing conditions. So we have an existing single drive-through here, which is accessed by the rear of the property. We have some existing parking and pavement in this area. If we go to the proposed site plan, we still maintain this existing single drive-through lane in the same orientation. But what we've done is kind of carve out some of this existing asphalt here. So instead of the parking and just kind of the asphalt area, we're gonna, I guess, continue some of that asphalt, add this second lane here and then we're actually going to take out a huge chunk of asphalt in this area in place of a lawn island, so to speak. So the, the idea behind the addition of a second drive-through is that Burger King, as well as many other fast food restaurants, are noticing that their, the majority of their traffic somewhere upwards of 80, 85% is actually all through the drive-through. So not only is Burger King making the switch, but you'll see a lot of other fast food restaurants doing something similar, adding this drive-through lane. It allows the, the operation to obviously be more efficient. They can get more customers through the window. Customers have less wait time. It decreases the vehicle stack. You know, so we're not necessarily pulling more customers in. We're not increasing the square footage of the building. We're not adding seats. We're basically just getting the existing customers to go through more quickly. So again, decreasing that queue length. So that's really the, the main component of this exterior work. Of course, along with that, we'd be upgrading the existing drive-through equipment. We'd be installing new drive-through equipment, you know, the clearance signs, the menu boards, the order confirmation units. Again, some pavements, some curving things along those lines. As I mentioned, or if I didn't mention, you know, we've obviously been working with, with staff here for probably a couple of months at this point in time since last year. And we've kind of gone around a few times with various comments and we were last in front of the TRC, I believe in mid-January. So there's been a lot of back and forth, a lot of comments, a lot of discussions, a lot of revisions on our end. Some of the major components of that is that there were some comments on the drainage in the stormwater. Originally, we were just looking to again kind of add this lawn island and really maintain the site as, as is. We received some comments both from staff and from the town engineer about, you know, perhaps enhancing the stormwater even further. Obviously, the implementation of a landscape for a lawn island is already a stormwater enhancement. It will reduce the impervious area, reduce the overall drainage. But again, what we've worked on and worked with the town engineer on is, is basically incorporation of kind of a low-lying depressed area here. And I'll just fast forward. So again, this is kind of a grading plan. You can see this kind of quasi-swale if we look at an enlargement. In essence, what we've really done is, is we've allowed this drainage to continue in this path, which it has been doing. We've opened up this curb cut. The drainage will then flow into this area. It'll go through some riprap to slow it down and it will basically sit in this, this depressed area. I believe it's a 10 or 12-inch depressed area. Ultimately, it will discharge overland flow back onto the pavement. But in the interim, hopefully, you know, some of that water does infiltrate into the existing soils. And even if it does not infiltrate, it certainly will slow it down. It certainly will settle out some of the sediments and remove some of the garbage and other things that might be transported in the stormwater. So we've incorporated that change is one of the, the items that was, major items that was discussed. Another item was with reference to the landscaping. And I think when we originally presented the project, again, probably back in December, we did not have really any proposed landscaping out here. We had maybe a couple of shrubs kind of in the rear of the property where it was most significant. Since that time, we have actually kind of gone back and enhanced the rear of the property quite a bit and you'll see there's, there's a decent amount of plantings back here now. And more importantly, the comment that came up was all the landscaping that was previously approved back in 2000 had apparently been, been cut down, you know, a handful of years ago. Not by the doing of, of our client. They actually retained this property shortly after COVID. It's my understanding that everything was cut down maybe the year before that. So they kind of acquired somewhat of a headache. So they've agreed and we've talked to them. They basically agreed to replant everything that was noted on that original 2000 landscape plan, kind of replant it basically as is. Now, there was some discussion about, obviously, those things were mature at the time of cutting down. So we kind of proposed instead of installing them at the size that was proposed back in 2000, we're installing them a little bit larger here. And as you can note or see on this note here, we're installing them at something that was kind of discussed, a three-and-a-half-inch caliper diameter at the breast height. So again, this, this plan itself does not necessarily portray all of those plantings. We're just kind of covering that with a note since those plantings are already shown on another plan. But again, this will be heavily landscaped when this project is done. And I think really the third comment or, you know, one of the bigger ones was kind of with respect to the traffic flow. There's quite a bit of discussion, especially in the area where the drive-through traffic leaves the site and, and cars entering here and, you know, cars exiting here and exiting here and maybe a little congestion. So I think one of the, the staff recommendations was to actually make this entrance a one-way only enter, which as you'll see right here, we have done. So in this case, now vehicles will only be able to enter in this location. They'll basically promote a one-way circulation around the building to the rear. Obviously, if a car wants to get to the drive-through, they come through this way and they will exit here. If a car is looking to enter the restaurant, they would find a parking stall and then they would also enter in the rear bypassing the drive-through and again, kind of coming out here. So we also have some traffic signage that was discussed, kind of to, you know, orient that one-way traffic. And I guess lastly, you know, one of the other comments was the size of the directional traffic signage. I think we originally had it proposed as six square feet and, and I believe zoning requirements are four square feet. So we have revised that as well. So I think that was kind of the majority of the comments that we have received. Again, majority of the site work is just relative to this double drive-through. But of course, at this point in time, we've really enhanced quite a bit of the site based on the back and forth with the, with the town. So I guess with that being said, I'm certainly able to answer any questions you may have or if there's any further discussion on any of those items.
Questions, comments from board members? Robin?
Could you help me understand why the two-lane flow increases customer time? Decreases customers' time?
Well, so what happened, and let me blow this up for you. First off, number one, in addition to decreasing the time, again, what we've done is basically add a little bit additional length here. So we're adding some additional queuing. But the theory behind a double, a double drive-through, and Steve perhaps could give you a little bit more data on it, is that you've got two people ordering basically at the same time. So you're no longer waiting for the, you know, the order board itself. You have two orders being placed. You have people in the restaurant fulfilling two orders at the same time. So again, in essence, it's not a true comparison that it's doubling the efficiency, but there's efficiency gained by, you know, multiple orders being taken at the same time, multiple orders being fulfilled at the same time and, you know, allowing that traffic to just, just move quicker.
Thank you. I see that.
As a follow-up to Robin's question, the, the diagram shows the outer or westernmost lane. Is, is there any concern that if that is full, that will somehow prevent the inner lane from proceeding forward?
You're saying if vehicles are.
Yes.
queued up to number seven here? Well, again, it's, you know, the way this works and I've, I've been to, you know, a handful of these double drive-throughs myself. Normally, the vehicles are going to stop at this, if you can see the square here, this is the order confirmation unit. So this is where the orders are being placed. So there's one in this area. There's one in this area. So at any given time, if this car stack is, or this, this stack exists, you know, this vehicle is going to be held up automatically and this vehicle is going to be held up automatically. You know, there would be hopefully some gaps here where this car is going to sneak in, then there's no traffic coming from this direction and this car is going to sneak in. As with any other merge situation, you know, even a parking lot or a garage emptying, you know, there has to be a little bit of give and take and understanding from the customers as well. But again, in theory, with these two vehicles giving orders at a similar time or, you know, they're being held up for a couple of seconds, which allows these other vehicles to kind of sneak into that queue line. So it's not like this is a constant flow in each direction and people are fighting each other. There is a automatic, you know, stop, wait, let this guy go type situation.
Thank you. And for the record, Paul is here. Other comments, questions? Susan?
Hi, everybody. I would like to ask about, so at the very top of your drawing there, you have a car that's in queue to go through the drive-through. The next car behind him that needs to go through drive-through, where is he going to be parked?
So if we're looking at the numbers, I guess, for, for ease of discussion, are you talking about number 11 and number 12 and 13 maybe?
Who's, so the car that's behind the car or multiple cars behind number 13, where, where, where is their car?
So if there's cars, if there's additional cars behind 13?
Yes.
So the, the intent would be that these cars that would stack behind 13 would obviously be coming northbound here. The goal would be to have, you know, them basically start stacking ideally on the left side of the pavement so that any customers in the dining room or anyone that's trying to leave will stay in the right lane here and be able to pass them out. So in essence, again, we've got a 24-foot wide drive aisle, which would be conducive to two-way traffic. In this case, really, it's only for one-way traffic. So the goal would be that these vehicles would actually queue, seems odd, but they would queue on the left side, allowing anyone else to pass them on the right side.
And will that be striped to indicate that or are you just hoping that folks do it that way?
We have not shown that striping. If, if that's a concern that the board has, we can, we can certainly, you know, look at doing that and, and putting a little bit better delineators on the pavement so that people will better understand or, you know, understand that's the goal to, to direct them that way.
So I guess following that, right now you have 55 parking spaces. Our ordinance is require 35 and you've just stated that 80 to 85% of your business is through the drive-through. Right where your, right where your cursor is right now, could you simply remove those eight or so spots? And call that the exit lane because there is so much parking on this site? Instead of, because if I was parked where that little nine triangle is, I may never get out of that parking spot.
That, yes, good point. I mean, if you're queuing up here, it would be difficult to get out of these spots. The way it's, you know, as I've mentioned, you know, again, these, these spots probably are rarely used if, if ever, unless there's perhaps an employee that would be parking back here. We had not contemplated removing these spots, but certainly we could look at, you know, the option of taking this lane in essence, you're saying basically just having it kind of swerve over, utilizing the existing blacktop to make sure that it's a kind of an escape lane or a lane around the, the queue?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could certainly look at doing that.
Okay, thank you.
We would have an objection.
And I don't know if that's even a good idea, but I think might, that kind of thing might solve the problem that you might have with folks getting, they can't exit the front. There's no other way out. But through those cars who are waiting in the, in the takeout, you know, in the drive-through.
Yep.
Yeah. So furthering on this subject, can you show the bottom of that, of that drawing down where the building is?
Anywhere in particular?
Yes, down in front of the, down in front of the building on the streetscape. So, and I think I mentioned this when I saw you all at TRC. But again, you have right now 20 spots more than our ordinance requires and 80 to 85% drive-through. One of the things that our town has been trying to do is increase the attractiveness of the streetscape, especially along Old Tower Hill Road. And if you'll notice that Webster Bank, a couple of doors down, has been set back from the road with landscaping in the front. You have 11 parking spots there that are 11 in excess of just the ones out facing the roadway. Would you consider removing those 11 spaces that face Tower Hill Road? Putting in landscaping there, putting in shrubbery and making a more attractive streetscape for your business? And even a pedestrian walkway that where that sidewalk is, would cut through a little green park-ish area instead of through the parking lot? And, and you can drive in that front entrance and then it's just basically a drive across the front of the building till you turn left. But that's green space, not parking space because you have so many extra spaces.
You know, we, we're not really considered that too heavily at this point. And I guess the reason for that is, you know, convenience. When, when we have parking for the, the building, you know, we, obviously, the ideal spots are the most convenient to the building. And, and these 11 spots, you know, are relatively positioned well for the entrances here. No different than, you know, these nine spots would be positioned well for the, the entrance. So at this point in time, you know, that was not anything we had really considered. We certainly understand we, we are overparked. And again, if we're looking at, you know, perhaps doing this lane back here, you know, we'd be closer to the required limit. I just don't know that for, for us in our operational purposes, you know, these are some of the ideal spots. I certainly can appreciate the, the town's idea that, you know, they want to improve the, the streetscape out here. And, you know, perhaps I can have somewhat of a discussion with, with the client and see if, you know, maybe they'd consider at least removing a couple of these spots. Again, you know, we will be improving that streetscape regardless because we are going to be replanting what should have already been there. So I think in either case, it will be, you know, much, much more aesthetically pleasing site once, once we're done with it.
Mr. Markowitz, Susan raises some very important issues. And with regard to stormwater and infiltration and green space, I also have a couple of comments not yet related to landscaping. We'll get into that later. But the current view, if you look at the southeastern corner of the lot, which is between the triangle with 11 in it and the corner that says stop in it, that, yes, that first parking space directly to the west of stop is currently full of water. And so it appears that although this is not a topo map, that at least in this portion of the property, the water drains toward that corner. So that might actually be a good idea to make that green space and continue some of that along the front. I think that's an excellent idea, actually. And then my other question is, do you have an alternative to manage the stormwater other than riprap? Riprap is generally something that we find in industrial situations, not in an area that we want to be walkable, pedestrian and bike-friendly.
So if, if I may, you know, this area here, I think, let me actually see if I can take a quick look. Because I believe we had kind of noticed maybe a little bit of a, a spot there. I guess, you know, the one concern we would have, you know, we could, I guess, if this area is low, we'd, we'd have to look at it a little bit and see, well, what do we end up doing with that water? I certainly don't want to promote that water to, you know, head off to the sidewalk or the roadway. We could certainly look at what's going on here and perhaps what, what might need to be done to, to help correct that situation.
You could, you could expand that island and allow for infiltration. And I, I noted that the photo that you just showed was before all of the, or the majority of the vegetation was cut down, which is also, of course, a factor in helping with infiltration.
Right, so we might be able to do something there. Again, I just, you know, I just need to, we would have to figure out what, what happens to the water. To be honest, if, if you're saying it ponds there now, I guess I don't know how it leaves if it's just evaporation because there's no, you know, drain at that point. So we might just have to think about how we would collect it and where that water would ultimately go. But, you know, perhaps it would be an area where we could open up, you know, the curb, so to speak, or maybe remove that spot and, and give a little bit more infiltration from a stormwater perspective. You know, I guess with respect to the rear, you had mentioned a comment about the riprap and
Yes.
get to the, kind of the plan that shows it best. So again, what we're looking to do is this riprap would really be, obviously, in the, in the rear of the property. That's only going to be accessible by, I shouldn't say only accessible. The, the goal would be that this would be where, where cars are going to park. I don't expect pedestrians. I don't expect bicycles to be back here. I don't see a reason for that. What we need to try to do is if we have a, you know, stormwater collecting off this pavement and it's going to basically channel into, you know, the, the lawn area here and the swale and the spiral retention area, I need to somehow slow that water down. You know, there, there's different ways to do it, but some type of riprap is really the, the best way to dissipate that energy without eroding the grass, without causing rills and constant repairs. And, you know, the last thing we want to do is concentrate a water flow over a grass area, start causing erosion and actually do the opposite of what we're trying to do. So that's why we selected the riprap for this area and this area. And again, it's, it's in the back. It's going to be relatively hidden. We're going to have some screening by the vegetation. And, you know, the goal would be that no pedestrians or, you know, bicyclists are kind of in this area behind the store anyway. So if there's another creative way, you know, we could certainly talk about that. But in my experience, you know, riprap is, is, is kind of the way we, we've done it. We've done many products where we've put in smaller stone and pea gravels, but ultimately it, it washes away instantly and then, you know, we're, we're left with a little bit of mess.
I would certainly recommend that you find an alternative. I mean, we have engineering firms come before us on a regular basis and they find other means by which they can, they can manage. Susan?
Thank you. So while you have this up, can, you put up a topo map earlier. Can you tell me that, can you remind me or show me again the topography here? And why we think that the stormwater will run sort of below that little raised island and into that depressed area? Like why, how is the topography going to direct the water in that little?
So let me, let me do this. Let me start by going back to the, the survey, which has the, the existing contour shown. So the way this site currently flows, you'll see this is a 77 contour, 76, 75, 74. So everything goes from east to west in this direction. Not only does it go east to west, you will see it actually starts heading south here. So again, where we're putting in this lawn island with the drainage, it's basically where we're matching this curb line here and we're putting in a curb cut over here. So if I fast forward to those sheets, again, all of this drainage, here's this one contour that we saw. This is now going perpendicular direction and heading straight towards this curb face. So the goal would be to collect whatever water we can that comes to this direction and basically allow it to come in here and then again, leave over here where this water now flows in this direction. You know, we can, I can add, if, if the, if we're not positive, I'm going to collect a ton of flow right here. We could certainly look at adding another curb cut in this location. Basically, with everything flowing perpendicularly, you know, we're going to grab pretty much any water that's, that's over in this area here. You know, the way that the site is graded, it kind of is what it is and we don't have a lot of green space to work with. So we're, we're trying to do the best we can with the limited amount of area that we have. You know, again, in this situation, you know, originally, we're just looking to do this just again inherently by removing this much pavement, you're getting a fairly, I'll call it substantial, just in relationship to the overall property size. It's a relatively substantial chunk of asphalt that's no longer going to be here on site. So there's already going to be that, that aspect to it. And again, hopefully, you know, we're, we're looking to grab any water we can. And again, if the board feels like, you know, we need another curb cut here, then that's fine. We can certainly do that. But, you know, we're outletting it here. So, you know, we're trying to get that water to sit in this, this pond area and I can't, you know, I can't really grab it here. you know, I can't really grab it here. It doesn't really function that way. So I'm kind of limited to where I can grab it.
Thank you for explaining that to me. Thanks. Thanks. Thanks for explaining that. But I'm sorry, I'm still confused. Because where you're showing your cursor that the water's coming across that parking lot, it's hitting a curb where you have that word maintain there. It's hitting that curb, it's running south and joining up with the water that's outflowing from that depression.
So this this has a, this is going to be at grade. So we have a curb and that curb is going to basically stop here. There's going to be three foot of no curbing. And then there would be curb again. So if water hits here, yes, it's going to flow this way. But again, the water, the intent is to put this elevation low enough that this water is going to migrate over here. And we're going to get a little bit of that water migrating. So again, I'm trying to capture, you know, this here. I can't simply capture this. It's already, you know, too low at that point. And again, so if if we want to look at, you know, trying to get a little bit more stormwater in, I don't have a problem adding another curb cut here, which would grab a little bit more of this flow. But, you know, we're not looking to necessarily regrade this entire parking lot, rip up existing asphalt and redirect all the stormwater. The intent is to basically maintain, you know, work with what we have, the existing pavement, the existing pavement grades. And if we can do, you know, do the most we can to collect that water. And again, speaking with the town engineer, I mean, we we both kind of looked at it and said, you know, we don't have a lot of room to to do anything, but what we've done here is is certainly a a huge help in addition to, again, the green space we're adding to the site.
Okay, thank you. And then one last thing, you had just indicated that, you know, this is an overall gain for the parking lot because this was previously asphalt and now it will be green space. But I think from the plans, you've taken out two islands, a number of mature birch trees and mature shrubbery from the from the parking lot. So I don't think this is, I don't know how the math works out, but I don't think this is a gain of green space. If you're removing all those mature trees and those raised islands that have shrubbery in the back parking lot, like we're losing a bunch of trees.
So if and I'll just kind of, I know this is small, but it's easier for me to flip this way and hopefully you guys could at least see it. And again, I'll show you what's what's happening. You know, the the existing lawn island or, you know, that we're really looking to, that's going to be removed. We are removing this small little sliver that's kind of bold right there. But if you notice, as soon as, well, yes, we are removing this section here too, which has those trees. Soon as I flip over, you'll notice that, you know, again, we're gaining a substantial, in essence, I'm putting back that one island. And then we're gaining a substantial amount of this green space. So agreed, while we are removing some existing green space there and again, trees, we are providing more green space. And again, if we go to the landscaping plan, we're obviously providing, you know, a decent amount of landscaping back there. So I agree, we we would be removing those two existing trees and some landscaping, but the goal would be to to add that back and then some.
But you're removing two islands, correct?
Yes.
We we are removing
Two islands and each island has multiple trees.
Yeah, well, so we're removing, correct, we're removing these two islands here, yes. This tree would remain though. If you notice this, this, well, I'm sorry, this is the the opposite. So again, these two islands would be removed and replaced with this large island here.
With the riprap.
With a small section of riprap, yes.
I don't, I don't think this is what we what we have envisioned. I mean, we want to see green infrastructure used. But this this entire area, this corridor is an an area that has been targeted for improvement. Improvement to walkability, visual aesthetics. And certainly, green infrastructure is a big part of that with regard to the amount of the pavement that is throughout the the corridor as a whole, which is leads to the heat island effect. It's there's a lot of noise over, it's an overlit area. So as projects come forward, we are trying to strongly encourage applicants to think about the the current situation and how to improve that. And without getting into a great deal of detail with regard to the landscaping, I I was on the board when this was first approved. And there were very specific recommendations made with species and with sizes. Those things have taken twenty years to mature. They have largely been cut down. I have absolutely no understanding why that would have been done. And regardless of whether it was a mistake or not, I feel that before we can make any kind of decision on this matter, that the landscape plan must reflect the previous plan that was submitted, both in terms of size and quantity. And in addition to that, the plan that, can you just change this to the plan that you have submitted for the back portion?
You mean the landscaping in the rear?
Yes. You need to make some some changes. I don't see a landscape architect stamp on this, but I believe you have eunomus, which is an invasive. And on the previous plan, when you go back to that, and I believe we discussed this at one of the TRC meetings, Bradford pear is not considered a particularly useful flowering tree at this point in time due to its tendency to develop branch loss and it doesn't hold up well. So I would I would recommend a different type of flowering tree to substitute for that. And there was one other thing with this as well. I think you might have eunomus, the burning bush in in this plan as well. So I I would strongly advise that we receive a landscape plan that reflects what was approved in the past and improve the most northern plan that you have submitted to us as well.
Can I just, I guess, clarify, when you say a landscape plan that was approved in the past, again, what what we've tried to, I guess I want to understand what you're saying. We've, you know, certainly it will be part of this plan set, the the requirements to the contractor, that he would in fact replant all the plants that were previously approved at this height here. Are we saying that's what you're looking for? Or is there more than that?
Well, what we're looking for is to replant the original plan with appropriate species and size minus the ones that are not considered hardy at this point in time or ones that are considered invasive. I think the only, you have some birch trees in the back of the building, you have dwarf alberta spruce that's still existing. Everything else is gone. The ginkgos, the weeping Norway spruce. The you have a weep, you had a weeping white pine, chemicepiris. You had several very appropriate specimen plantings that have all been removed. And I for the life of me can't understand why anybody would do that because not only are they provide aesthetic value, but they provide an infiltration value, particularly those that are mature. So I think we need a plan from you folks that reflects all of those things.
So again, I guess, just
And I understand you're not a landscape architect, but nevertheless, we review these kinds of plans all the time.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, Jamie Rabbit.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I Todd, I think you and Maria are on the same page. It's just the matter of the providing the appropriate information. It's difficult for the commission to, excuse me, the planning board at some point to make a motion that says, please approve the following. Refer to the following three different sets of plans, the original landscape plan. But subtract what may still be there and in good health. Add what's gone, but then go to another set of plans to see what size it's supposed to be. So you what Maria and I think the board is really looking for is one concise landscape plan that in essence will be your bid document that you give to your landscape contractor. And that that plan be a prayer prepared by the appropriate professional. So that they're not selecting plant material that in Rhode Island is considered invasive and also in surrounding states.
Okay, I I think I completely understand now. So right, again, in in our documents, we are, maybe we're talking the same thing, but you guys want to have it on one plan sheet. It's part of our set. It's clear that here's everything on one plan sheet. You don't have to refer to other sheets, basically.
Yes.
And and then the planning board's reviewing one sheet versus flipping through three, three or four different sheets.
Okay, understood.
Other comments from board members?
All right, I have one more quick comment. Just a reminder that we're also looking for plans that don't include invasive species. You also have a number of barberry bushes on there. And barberry is a Rhode Island invasive. It serves absolutely no purpose. But it will manage to capture all of the litter blowing across the parking lot. Like, it's not. I think we could find a better choice than barberry and the and the burning bush, which are both invasive.
Thank you, Susan.
Also, and Susan referenced this earlier, but although it's not a requirement, if you could consider the two breaking up that front row of eleven spots, perhaps the spot on either side of the cross crosswalk there where the hatch marks are and turn that into green space. So instead of having eleven spots across the whole front, you'd have two smaller spots and you would only lose one. I think that would help a lot for the streetscaping. So I'd ask you to consider that.
That's a great idea, Joe. It would certainly make it that much more pedestrian friendly. And it actually it looks like there's a trash barrel in front of the parking. Is that correct? Seems like an odd place.
Which plan, are you looking at a plan or are you looking at Google?
I'm looking at what you have in front of us, your screen. Or Jay's screen.
So I guess we're I'm not seeing what you're seeing.
It's just to the, oh, it's right near your cursor.
Trash, okay, I see what you're saying now.
Seems like an odd spot.
Yeah, I don't know if that still exists today. I'm assuming that was probably one of the temporary, you know, trash cans. We can certainly, you know, find a better home for that if that is still existing now.
But Joe, Joe's point is excellent, I think. Any further comments, questions from board members? Anything from DPS, Rich?
No, I've got nothing further to add, although I will point out that you know, I looked at this and and we've talked, I believe I might have talked with you, Todd, a couple of times, but you know, I looked at this as though we were getting back and it's and I know it seems like it's not, you know, they're not supplying green space, but they actually are. It's, you know, I I think I calculated it. I I could be almost two thousand square feet of of pavement now that's going to become green space. It may even be a little lower, maybe perhaps even, it's between fifteen hundred and and two thousand square feet of of asphalt that now is being converted to green space. So I like that. And you know, as far as the riprap goes, I mean, if we go down the street, we look at the the bank, there is stone in front of the bank because there is a pond there. They have a pond in front of the of the building. So to call it green space, it's really detention basin. It does have stone. Every project's going to have stone. And and the point is that that the the riprap, it dissipates the velocity and it it also is a place to collect sediments. Pretreatment's very important in these water quality structures. Without that, the, you know, the turbidity is such that that the 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 infiltration practice that you're proposing will get clogged and it will not function. So places like riprap and and those types of things, collect that sediment and keep it from clogging the system. And that's, you know, that's what's most important here is the water quality and volume. I want, I always want to see as much volume as possible. Because the more infiltration we get, the more recharge we get and the more water quality we get. Those are the things that are important. Those are the things that are going to reduce total suspended solids, nitrogen and phosphorus. I mean, that's what we're looking for. So I mean, I thought that I thought what they're what they're proposing is a is a is a good option. You know, I do agree, the front area does get flooded a bit, but it has been. I believe that walkway actually acts as a as a travelway for water to get over to get over to Old Tower Hill Road. Now, I'm not sure how many changes you can make up there. You have nowhere to really put the water other than to build another basin. You know, frankly, I don't, I I one one time in my in my professional career, different than this career, was I put a pond in front of a building and I I've regretted it ever since. I just don't think it's a good look. And I've said that before at this meeting, I believe. But anyways, I thought that that this was a was an adequate response. Also, you know what I find with traffic volume, and we're having this issue on Pershing Ave, we've had the the exact same discussion. When you double stack, you reduce stacking, you you reduce the amount of cars that this is going to go out into travelways, out into parking, out into those places. So by doubling it up, you help stack it. I don't believe, I don't, I mean, I can't tell you, I can't tell you how it affects their business. But all I can tell you is that when you have double lanes, you are reducing stacking. So anyways, that's just just a couple of thoughts, that's all.
Thanks, Rich. And if you have any thoughts?
I'm sorry, one other thing I wanted to add, though.
Okay.
Todd, if you could look at, instead of just, you know, tossing riprap, what we've done in town, and we had a site over on Tory Road, is we placed the riprap as pretreatment. But we mortared it in. And if we put a small lip, if you put a small lip so that 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 water collects there and sits there and it may even evaporate there, which is fine. It's only a small volume of water, but it looks a lot better when you when you mortar in the riprap. It just looks a lot better. That's just just a thought. If you could look at that and that would that would maybe resolve some of the concerns for riprap.
Thanks, Rich. If there are no further of comments or questions from board members, would someone like to make a motion to continue this to our April meeting, which is, Jay, do you have a date for that?
Madam Chair, that would be April twenty-sixth, I believe.
So moved.
We have a motion from Joe. Do we have a second? Second from Paul, any further discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do believe we representatives from Flynn Estates.
Very good. So let's go back to that major subdivision, pre-application concept plan, Flynn Estates subdivision. And I believe we have someone representing the applicant.
One moment, I just promoted them. Not coming, it's not coming over for some reason.
Hey, Jay, it's Josh. Am I up?
Yes, you are.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, welcome.
Thank you for having me. For the record, Josh Rosen, Pennsylvania Engineering Office at twenty-seven Sycamore Ridge Drive in Tiverton. Here be on behalf of the applicant and owner, Mr. William Flynn. We have a pre-application in front of you folks for a subdivision of land to create one new additional building lot on South Road. Two of the properties involved in this application are owned by Mr. Flynn. And one of the properties is owned by Mr. Jack Chen. Again, there are three existing lots. All three have structures on them currently. All three have frontage from South Road or on South Road. And the goal here is for Mr. Flynn to create one additional or on South Road. And the goal here is for Mr. Flynn to create one additional building lot within his property limits. So originally, we presented a yield plan that would work for all three properties. Where we would be able to add that fourth building lot at the northern section of Mr. Flynn's property. We came back in with the flexible design option because without the necessary frontage, it's only viable way we could make this work. Right now, what we're attempting to do or considering to do when we move forward through master preliminary process is to hopefully utilize a shared access driveway off of the existing gravel.
Hey, Josh, could you, could you just speak up a little? It sounds like baseball bats hitting balls in the background. So could you?
Yeah, I'm on.
Just speak up a little, please.
How is that? Is that better?
A little.
So I think hopefully you heard the general intent. We're trying to create this buildable lot in the northern section of Mr. Flynn's larger property. What we're trying to do is use a shared access driveway that would take us off the existing southern driveway that he uses for his main dwelling currently. We would share that access with the new property, establish a new buildable lot that would have its own well, its own septic system. So we're at pre-application because the major subdivision process kicks in for this flexible frontage. And we're just looking for some direction, some feedback on the proposal before we go forward to the next stage. We've included a letter within our application to the board requesting that master and preliminary be combined. We feel we could take one step and put our concept plan and our preliminary design of the subdivision with all the design work necessary for that additional lot at one time, get our DEM permitting all at once and proceed that way. So that's the reason for that request to combine the two stages. We pretty much have a master plan level concept laid out as it is. There are wetlands at the eastern side of property. It's a large pond and associated wetlands. We plan on getting necessary permitting, you know, that's needed for the new house and the new construction up at the northern section where the upland exists that we're trying to obtain that building permit.
Thank you, Josh. Questions, comments from board members? Josh, just to clarify, so it would be the, so the preferred access will be then the northern?
On the southern section of, off the southern section of the gravel driveway, there's an existing pathway already established that traverses the property in the northwestern direction. So we would plan on extending that out to the new house lot. Either way, I think we, you would need some some sort of shared access, either by way of the lot to the north or that lot to the south. So we chose the existing cart path as an option.
And will there be any issue with regard to the wetland, the perimeter wetland buffer?
We feel because of the nature of that land area already being disturbed and established that, you know, DEM will review that area within within their jurisdiction through the permitting process because that's how we're going to show our driveway. We feel that we'll be able to obtain a permit with no problem. Perhaps they'll ask us to maybe do some enhanced buffering on the eastern side of the of the driveway within the buffer. But in speaking to my biologist and, you know, DEM permitting expert on staff, we feel that's not an issue.
And did you have the opportunity to look at the staff comments?
I have not.
Okay, there is a comment relative to the amount of frontage and being specific to cumulative frontage. So that it has to be continuous.
Yeah, Josh, in your, I'm sorry, this is Jay Parker, in your narrative, you, you stated the frontage based on a cumulative number for the two legs on out front.
Okay.
The ordinance requires that it's got to be contiguous. So it's just a technicality. You'll have to just state that the this one section, one of the two, most likely the biggest one, 21, 21 feet would be the frontage for that lot, which is lot five.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, it's just a technical clarification. And the other comment that we had from staff was the delineation of the wetlands appropriately so that we can quantify suitable for development accurately.
Yep, we plan on doing that as well. Okay, thank you. And just, I mean, for the board's edification, Jay, if you don't mind, can we slide back to the existing conditions plan? I don't know if anybody was thinking in their head, like, why do we have assessors lot 87 involved? The Chen property was simply because, one, Mr. Flynn and Mr. Chen have a good relationship. And there's some access use behind their property now that we're going to try to use for a driveway. We thought instead of involving a third, a third lot with an easement that we would reconfigure, take the opportunity to reconfigure the land area of that kind of oddly shaped little eastern finger that is owned by Mr. Chen that spans behind lot 81 and 82. And we figured, again, a good idea to maybe try to clean up those lot lines to make the future, the plating of these lots, you know, a little more logical in a sense on paper. So that's why we really included Mr. Chen's property for no other reason other than that.
Other questions? Susan?
Hey, Josh. So I have a question about the access driveway, which runs, I think, right along the edge of that wetland. Is that, will that remain a gravel or dirt, you know, country path? Or will that be widened, paved and lawned with, you know, that be developed or will be left in its natural state?
So we're going to propose just a gravel access driveway 12 feet wide, which in some areas, it's already a 12-foot wide pathway. We've advised Mr. Flynn that if we were to keep the cleared path, turn it into a gravel driveway and extend it to this new building site, that it would have to stay gravel for the purposes of the permitting process with DEM and likely, you know, the town soil erosion. It would be the only really way that we could satisfy the agencies when this thing goes to review. So it would have to run as a well-maintained gravel driveway. And he's understanding of that, and that's why he asked us to proceed in that fashion, obviously. Like I said, we had, we would have a couple other alternatives. We could come right off of South Road through the actual leg of the frontage for the new lot we're developing. And we could have also, in theory, shared the access driveway with the other existing parcel of land up to the northwest corner. That existing dwelling has a driveway. We could have come in through there and just come straight back into the new house lot. Those were other options. But again, this was preferable because of what was already in place. And we did definitely advise Mr. Flynn that there's going to certainly be some conditions for that driveway. And he's still willing to pursue the driveway as shown when we go to the permitting process.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Robin?
Could I ask why that is the preferred entrance, such a long driveway, thinking of snow and things like that? What, is there an obvious reason why I'd much prefer the driveway?
To be completely honest, one, because it's existing, but two, or a portion of that area is already accessible. But two, he plans to stay in the home on the property. And he plans to build this house on the new lot for a family member. And the access between those two properties, even though in the future could change, but for right now would be an easier mechanism between family members. Whereas that front area or, or I'm sorry, the lot on the northwest corner of this subdivision, that's it right there, that existing dwelling, the one up front, he may decide that that needs to be renovated and he may end up selling that, to be honest. So we just, he just thought that it would be better because it would be within the family to start with.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other thoughts, questions? If there's nothing else, we do have a request to combine master plan and preliminary. And there is a motion on page four of the staff comments for this item. If the board is agreeable and someone would like to make that motion. Susan? Just unmute yourself.
I can do that. Are we doing it as is or have, we're not changing anything, right?
No, it's usually these are pretty standard.
Okay, so I will make a motion. The South Kingstown Planning Board hereby grants the request of the applicant, William Flynn, to combine the conceptual master plan and preliminary plan stages of review for the proposed major subdivision located at 265, 341 and 309 South Road. Assessors plat 56-1, lot 5, 6 and 87. The applicant shall be required to meet the application requirements for both the conceptual master plan and preliminary plan stages of review prior to scheduling the required public hearing.
We have a motion from Susan. Do we have a second? Second from Paul. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to our final agenda, item 471 High Street. Is there anyone representing the applicant? I see we have Stephen Sullivan, who has been promoted. And good, is Jason Marinelli part of your team as well? He has his hand raised.
He is, yes.
And Steve Lang.
Yes.
And he has also been promoted. Welcome and please proceed. You have the floor.
I think Jason is going to speak on behalf of the owner.
Okay, you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, this is Jay Marinelli from Fernigan and Marinelli, representing Narragansett Ventures. And I think and Steve as well. So this matter came before the technical review committee back in December and then again in January. And this is pretty much a use change. It's, I can believe it's going from use change for retail space down to an office use and storage space. Some plans had already been submitted to you a couple of months ago with respect to a basic design improvement to the existing building. There was not going to be any interior additional space added to that building. There were going to be a lot of aesthetic improvements, both to the parking area and with plantings. So it's seen as a very nice improvement to this particular property. And it was moved along to planning. I think that's kind of where we are right now. And I know Steve Lang, if Steve, if you wanted to kind of give your review of what you were trying to do here with respect to this piece of property.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
So yes, I came across this piece of property. It's a wonderful little building. I think we all know it. It's just very sad the way that it's situated right now. I bought the property in July. We looked at everything. I was curious to the fact that it was part of a condo association. Three buildings that used to be owned by the charity, Welcome House. So we went through the normal due diligence and we thought it was fine. So we bought the property with the plans to change this building and make it look like almost a train station type affair. Clean the hole up outside of the building up, and I want to use it as my office. I live in Narragansett on the water. I've been involved with the Audrain Car Museum in Newport. And I have three cars that are very valuable and will be in the museum and be in the concourse next year. So I plan on storing the cars there and using it as my office. So what came up during the TRC review was the condominium association, which Welcome House put together, never really became a construct in in any of the buildings. No one seemed to know anything about it. There were never any meetings or anything else. And somewhere along the line, I believe in Ju, in July, I mean, in March of last year, the one condominium owner, which is the back, the back portion off of High Street, I mean, off of Church Street, paved a lot without permission. And the town came by and talked to him. And I guess there was never any resolution of that, and there was never a notice of violation. So was unaware. And as my project came up to the TRC, everyone was concerned now that there was a violation within the condominium association on this other property by Daniel Pierce. So as we had our subsequent meetings, we finally said, hey, it's, we don't know anything about it. A notice of violation was finally issued. The first issue was wrong because it went to Welcome House. It didn't even go to Daniel Pierce. And then the NOV was revised. Now, Daniel Pierce was supposed to come back to the town by March 4th, March 1st. I have written to him and called him two or three times. I'm in California, but he has not responded. So I don't know whether he has come back to the town or not with a plan to mitigate the paving that he did. But once again, my plan is just to redo the outside of the building, plant along Church Street so people can't cut in with plantings that are low enough so they're not line of sight problems. And then run plantings along the back of the building, shielding from that parking lot in the back and more or less to paint around the building with green so that looks nice.
Thank you. Amy, could you give us a little bit more detail on whether or not any extraneous legal issues that are not necessarily within the purview of the board would prevent us from this development plan review moving forward?
Yep, Amy, go on. Special legal counsel, you, you hit the nail on the head. We have, the planning board has to review and approve what's before it. The town will be pursuing the violation. And, you know, the, the property owner as a whole, just like with every property, is responsible. There may well be internal litigation between the condo unit owners. So the fact that there is an outstanding violation on this property shouldn't prevent this development plan from going forward because the violation will be dealt with separately.
Thank you, Amy. Questions, comments from board members? Joe?
And this is not meant to be a criticism, but it seems that the lot, truthfully, the proposed use is a considerable underutilization of that, that property. It's a 30,000 square foot lot in a commercial downtown. Have you considered other, other options for it? I mean, it's a, it's a large commercial lot. I mean, it could house a whole host of things, including maybe some multi-use, some considerable number of residential units close to walking downtown. And again, it's not a criticism, it's just an observation that
Um, and again, it's not a criticism, it's just a observation that um. This lot has a lot more potential than that, or at least in my opinion, it has a lot more potential than what is being proposed.
Well, I'll try to answer that. I looked at the lot. I've looked at different places. Um, I think as that area town gentrifies more, maybe you could have more uses. It was once a gas station. And in my due diligence in the purchase, you know, my main concern was the tanks that were there and any problems we I may have with DEM. So this has always been a gas station and after that it became a mini mart, which was not really successful there. It went through two or three owners and it's really a derelict building. So I don't think it's big enough to do residential. And I don't think anybody would really, you know, I mean, it's across from the fire station. It's uh, it's next to um, the Stephen Sullivan's Construction uh, Home Office. And then the building behind me is owned by Daniel Pierce Construction. And it's parked, you know, he paved over the lot, he parks trucks there, the house is in disrepair. Um, you know, I if I had a master plan for the town, I would love to see Peace Dale flourish and and change, but right now. Um, you know, I I bought the building and I'll put a significant amount of money in repairing the outside of the building down the road. Uh, that the building could be converted. I'm not going to do anything to the building that wouldn't would not allow it to be converted to a variety of different uses. But at the moment, this is the highest and best use I can find for it. This is for my office. Uh, I don't think much else would be supported there.
Well, again, it's just a comment, but thirty thousand square feet, commercial downtown. I believe the zoning requirements are five thousand for the first unit, twelve hundred for the each additional unit. That would put twenty one residential units as a potential. Um, and perhaps some type of multi-use building with apartments above, so um. It's not, you say it's not a big lot, but I think for a commercial downtown that's close to um. So many other activities, it is a pretty significant lot. And again, um, it's just a, it's just an observation on my part, not, you certainly have a right to develop it how you please, but. Um, it's just, I I feel delinquent if I didn't bring that up.
And Mr. Murphy, that would be a, that would be a pretty dramatic. Uh, change to that particular area if you were looking to develop it, and that'd be a pretty impactful on that particular area as well. This is a much less impactful uh, plan for this this use, and it may change down the road. Um, but you know, Mr. Lang is also a developer in Florida and Massachusetts, and he's. Pretty familiar with these types of projects and and what you can do and can't do, but. Um, yeah, I mean, obviously, i- if it could be used for something, we would, maybe he would entertain that in the future. Uh, but right now, I think he just wants to kind of beautify this and and make it useful, certainly an upgrade to what it currently is.
Thank you, Mr. Marinelli, and and we certainly do appreciate the effort that has gone into improving the exterior. Quite a nice design. Um, other thoughts, questions from board members? Um, I just had one comment and probably to no one's surprise, it involves the landscape design that was submitted. Um, I would recommend two things. One is that you have the plantings listed, but you need to. Um, stipulate the size either by caliper or by height for each. Uh, species, and I would strongly advise you to substitute either Alex Glabra or Alex Cronada for the boxwood. Because boxwood blight is still a big problem and it's not worth installing something that may not survive.
I don't have a problem with that. That's it. That's an easy fix.
Thank you. Anything else from, oh, Susan, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to reiterate what's already been said, that I think this building looks like it's going to be a very attractive. Change for this neighborhood, so thank you for your attention to improving the look of this neighborhood in this building. I have a little tiny thing which is so picky, I don't even want to say it, but I might even be wrong. But I think on the plans, you have north and south upside down and east and west backwards. Do I, am I looking at this all wrong? You've got the um, the front of the building as the south elevation, but I believe that faces northwest.
Front of the building, yeah, I think you're right. The front of the building should be north.
Or at least west.
I can, I can make the change to that.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to criticize.
Oh, no, it's all right.
But I think this is great. Thank you.
Thanks.
If there are no further comments, um, we do have a draft motion. My one recommendation would be to add a condition of approval. Um, to this relative to the landscaping and uh. Perhaps Jamie, as administrative officer, you would be willing to look at that. And of course, I'm 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 never averse to looking at that as well. Um, but the thighs and and species um. Uh, should be. Be a part of the plan.
Um, Madam Chair, as long as your delegation is in essence a swap out of material. I would feel comfortable doing that, um, reviewing the final material, and I can do that in consultation with others. Uh, I would also note, um, as your administrative officer, if I'm taking on that task on your behalf. I would also consult with the Department of Public Service just to make sure we have no conflicts with regards to that intersection. And work with Mr. Lang on finalizing that plan.
And and Jamie, you understand that I'm not just talking about any substitutions, but I'm talking about actually. Um, a listing of the of the caliper or height of the species.
Yeah. And again, the understanding is that you would not be starting out at one gallon for any shrub-like material. And again, there are alternatives and again, even within the boxwood family, there are a few with, if Mr. Lang wanted to. Stick with a few, there are a few that are a little. Less susceptible to boxwood blight like green velvet, but there are also substitutes that, you know. Uh, in the holly family, that'll give the same appearance.
Exactly, and that would be my recommendation as well.
All we want to do is keep the height down so you don't have any line of sight problems at church and high street.
Yes, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Lang.
Um, if there are no additional comments for board members, would someone like to make a motion? That begins on page two of the staff comments for this.
I'll make that motion. The South Kingstown Planning Board hereby grants development plan approval to four seventy one High Street. With the proposed change of use from use code fifty five retail trade up to ten thousand square feet. To use code forty four, office personnel and limited storage up to ten thousand square feet. And associated site improvements on assesses plat forty eight dash three, lot one forty six. Located at four seventy one High Street, Stephen Sullivan, Inc., applicant, arrogant adventures partner LLC owner. The development plan approval is based upon plans entitled zoning plan assesses plat forty eight dash three, lot one forty six. Prepared for Stephen Sullivan, Inc., situated in the town of South Kingstown, Rhode Island, sheet one of one. Dated November thirtieth, two thousand twenty one, with revisions through December thirteenth, two thousand twenty one. Prepared by Dowdell Engineering Associates LLC, P O Box sixteen eighty four, Charleston, Rhode Island, O two eight one three. This approval is based on following findings of fact and conditions of approval. Findings of pact one through six and conditions of approval one through five. With five being the review and approval of the landscape plan by staff.
Thank you, Joe. We have a motion from Joe. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Paul. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You guys very much. I appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You also. Um, that brings us to the end of our agenda, and as a reminder, we have a work session. Next Tuesday, which is the, is it the eighth or the ninth you have? Totally confused.
Eight.
That would be the eight.
All right, all right.
That is a Zoom meeting, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
We also. We'll also be sending out a Excel spreadsheet on the work program. Um, two aspects of that email that will come to the planning board members. One will, where you will rank each one of the items on a scale of one to ten. One being a high priority, ten being a lower priority. And then prioritize them one through twenty two in the second table that should come out, come to you tomorrow.
Thank you, Jamie. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, also just to remind the board, there's TRC the following day after work work session on Wednesday, the ninth and not at nine o'clock, I believe. Susan, you're the duty member? Yes, okay.
Thank you, Susan.
Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Can I also ask a question? Um, I assume since we're meeting by Zoom next week, our doodle poll showed we wanted to continue by Zoom as long as we can. How did that turn out?
Uh, the decision was made to go with virtual meetings. Uh, that will extend until March nineteenth or eighteenth. I can't remember when the executive. Expires unless it's been modified in some way or there's some other direction that comes from council in regards to that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, the difficulty we will have is, uh, just quick. The executive order expires on the eighteenth and we have a meeting on the twenty second and we have to do agendas on the sixteenth or seventeenth, so. Um. With that order expiring and all likelihood, unless we know something's changing, the twenty second would be an in-person meeting.
And uh, to expand on that, we also have a special meeting on the twenty fourth of March, Thursday, the twenty fourth. Um, that is going to have to be an in-person meeting because the advertising for that public hearing was already. Uh, made in the paper two weeks ago, prior to the decision to go back to Zoom, so.
Okay, thank you. A motion to adjourn.
I would make that motion, but I came in late, so I feel like I need to stay a few extra minutes, but.
That's all right, we'll we'll accept your motion. Thanks, Paul, second. Susan, thank you. Um, all those in favor say aye and raise your hands.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Good night.